And Julie can continue on with the presentation. She'll talk a little bit about ClearGov. And ClearGov is something, you know, while it's new, it's, it helps us really put into the budget book, which helps us present our proposed budget. But without that, Mayor, I'll take any questions.
All right. Counsel, any questions for City Manager Rice?
Okay. So before we get too deep in budget, I would like to show you kind of the fruits of what we brought to you, I guess, several months ago when we talked about having an online budget tool or a live budget tool. So this is kind of new to us. And so if I have to defer as I'm going through here to Jacob, I will, because he built this. I'm going to give he and our accounting assistant, Clarissa, very high praise for this document because I've not had a whole lot to do with the building of this. But the backside software was pretty hard to set up, and he did it. So I just thought I would show it to you. This is the QR code that takes you directly to the link. This is on the website as well. But I wanted to provide the link so if anyone wanted to see it. And basically, I think Martin's driving, and so am I. So if you look at this, it'll open. Martin, are you, there he goes. Martin's going to open for me. So it will look like this on the website. But what's really nice about this is two things. First of all, if we have last minute changes and we make those, in the past, we've had to go and physically create every graph again because they were all built out in Excel. So every, if one number changed, everything changed. And so when we have two days, literally is what we had this year, to come up with some proposed tax rates from the time we received the certified roll on a Thursday to the property tax rate calculation on Saturday afternoon, we had about two days to come up with something and work that in and rework the budget so that we could file it. So what you basically are looking at, if I just simply show you general fund. So it'll give you the narrative like you're used to seeing it. Looks like our regular budget book. I'm not driving very well. So if your summary's here, if you go down and look for your graphs and detailed information, and you want to look at more things specifically, it'll have all the detail, actually more detail than you've seen in the past as far as what we present to you in the budget book. And then you're able to eliminate or add categories if you want to dig down a little bit deeper. And then it'll have links to take you to different places. So it's handy from a user standpoint. If you want to eliminate things, like I don't want to see taxes, I want to see everything else. And then you can look at those on a summary level and then drill down from there. So it's really handy, and you can go through each section. And as I said, with every change we make, this changes. And so you're seeing live documentation at all times. Now, once the, the budget is adopted, of course, there won't be any changes, and it will be as it's, as it was adopted. But it really has been good to be able to make those changes quickly and shift gears when we needed to, especially over the past few weeks as we've been dealing with the implications of the flood. Hey, Martin, I'm good. Yes, please.
But this is not on the website yet.
It is, it's live today.
So have you had any activity? I know that's very early.
I haven't looked, to be honest. We, we got it live this morning. It was on there as a PDF before when we presented the proposed budget. We went through and made some updates just based on technical things we needed to make on the backside and got it on the website. So it's live today. So it's out there for anyone who wants to use it. And it, it's a good resource. And there's more detail in there than you will have seen in the past. So we're happy about it. It's going to take us a little while to transition to using a new tool. But so far, it's been nice because we made some changes to charts and graphs, and they automatically changed for us. So that's been, it's been really nice. So I wanted to introduce you to that briefly. Okay, so let's hop into citywide. We always look at that first. So just from a summary level, we start our budget process, of course, back in October. We pretty much start as soon as we start the year. So we'll start working on the following year's budget. We were really working at a strong pace. And of course, we had some challenges, most of which Dalton addressed with you, that weren't flood-related. So we know what those challenges are. We've talked about forecasts at, in depth. But we really tried to remain committed to sustainability. Obviously, we have increase in personnel costs as does every other business, group health, training salaries, those kind of things that just, you know, they compound over time. So we are in the people business. So it takes our people to provide the services that we provide to the community. And so that is the largest cost within the general fund budget. Departments, for the most part, maintained baseline budgets, and some of them came in less than they were last year. And so we had a lot of internal meetings and really talked at looking at what are the services that we need to be providing, at the quality we need to provide them, and where can we look at reducing expenditures where we can to make the most sense of the budget. So I will say there's not a lot of room in operations. I've looked at it in detail, down to every gallon of bleach that we buy. And there's not a lot of, there's just not a lot of fluff there. We, we don't build that into operational budgets. We did have to make some rapid shifts at the last minute, of course, in the last few weeks. So again, we thank you for your patience as we adjusted some things and moved our workshop to a little bit later with everything going on. But we really tried to take into consideration what we know about the disaster, which was not much. So if this had been in, you know, March or April, we would have been able to identify exactly what loss value was. On this notice, we cannot. So we're using some estimations provided by Kirkad, and then we'll follow those through as we've talked about into November. We were able to keep some sustainability components, and Dalton talked a little bit about those, protected our merit in step increases for staff, and then protected fund balance for potential use. So we're not taking any, there's no movement of fund balance to other expenses at this time. We'll talk about flood repairs in the next few weeks. We'll be bringing you a lot of updates on that as we move forward. We did change some structure, and we talked about this a little bit. So taking KSP and golf, which are really fee-based parks. And so when people pay for those services, what we're asking those two divisions to do is to, over a period of time, stand on their own. And so golf has been its own fund, and then it was moved administratively back to the general fund. But it really is a business. And so we're moving that out separately for transparency. But also, we've been really focused on long-term planning in those two. So when we talk through this, I'll show you how that kind of skews the number in the general fund because it looks like a reduction. But when you bring that back in and really compare apples to apples, it's not. And so we'll talk about that because I don't want it to appear that we've made all these cuts out of the general fund that, that are not essentially general fund cuts. And then, of course, transition to the new public safety facility. And there's a lot of things that we're, we're just estimating right now until we know more. But we've estimated, we feel like, on some square footage to comparable to some other areas and things like that. So we're hoping that we've captured everything that's required for that. And we did put that in its own department so that in the future, if anyone says, what is that public safety facility cost us to operate? We can tell you what the utilities are, what are the expenses, what are the, the maintenance and those kind of things. So key initiatives for '26, repair, replace, obviously, rebuild any damage to property caused by the flood. And so that's, I would say, the second highest thing that we've been doing in our department in the last month is really assessing what do we have and what can we expect from reimbursement and what are our funding sources out there. We dedicated, we have dedicated resources so that we can really be successful in our FEMA grant. It is a very long process, a very detailed process. And department directors are working with us very well to make sure that we get what we need to be able to do that. Employee retention, that's always a top priority for us. As you know, the, you know, the more we can retain the people that we have, the better services that we can provide. So we're really trying to work on turnover and those kind of things. And then completion of current capital projects. So not a lot of new initiatives, just basically because of what we've been faced with. But definitely want to just finish some of the things we have started. So looking at citywide, $102 million in revenues, $117 million in expenses. And so just so we know, clearly, that is not a balanced citywide budget. The general fund and the water fund are both structurally balanced by policy. The reason for the difference there is capital projects are multi-year projects. So we'll receive funding in one year, and expenditure doesn't come till the next. So our revenues are actually recorded when we receive them and our expenses when they, we incur them. So it's very normal to see that on a, on a consolidated level. We wanted to show you this just kind of as part of our working process, I guess. So when departments first start submitting things to us in February, they'll submit their operational requests just for their regular operating budget, and then anything new that has not been in the budget before. And this wouldn't be things that they're changing or, you know, changing a software from one to the other, things like that. These are, these are brand-new requests that haven't been in the budget before for consideration. So what you're seeing here is on the top, the new position requests that were put in. And then also, at the bottom, the new item requests that were put in. And so I put it like this because it's a little bit simpler to see. Basically, we had about almost $1.2 million in total new requests, and we're funding $200,000 and some change. So the biggest thing, and we'll talk about it later, the only position that we added was an animal control slash code enforcement officer, which you know, and we've talked about at some depth. And Dalton can certainly speak more to that if there's detailed questions. And then a few things, one thing for the golf course, some contract management software that is desperately needed. And will definitely have a lot of value to our daily processes. And then an escapist for the water fund. So the other things we're not really trying to track on is what things are requested year over year that are not able to be included in the budget and how do we start addressing, you know, how we fit the things in that are necessities that we're not adding to fleets or adding to equipment or positions. Okay, so everybody's probably biggest interest here is general fund. So it is structurally balanced, right at $39 million. This is about what it was last year. If you bring KSP and golf back in for comparison, we're about 2% higher. So 2% is still really small increase. So you can tell departments have done a lot of work. Obviously, we did push some things and reduce some things that we've talked about in workshop, but we'll talk about those a little bit more. So we reduced general fund asset replacement. We were scheduled, based on what we kind of talked through last year and the prior year, to hopefully be at $800,000 this year. We're not able to do that with the shifts that we need to make, with the unexpected events, and what we're not really able to estimate right now as far as loss value. So we kept that at $500,000. We have some interest money that's rolling over there as well. So we're not really taking the biggest hit that we could have on there. And again, we'll watch that. And as exemptions come in and we see what the actual role is after those exemptions are applied, then we can come back and discuss those things once we're more comfortable. We just didn't want to over-budget something or underestimate property tax. Reduced street maintenance, so this is a biggie, and we know that. But what we looked at was a 10-year history of what was budgeted and what was actually spent. And so, you know, from a, from employee capacity standpoint, and then also sometimes finding contractors to get to things timely, we are doing a carryover of the surplus every year to CIP. And so we were comfortable at that level for now because that's about what we were rolling over each year. This past year was $375,000. Years past, it's been 400, 600. So we're kind of reassessing that and working with David and his team to see where we need to be and what we need to do going forward. We reduced some community events, really immaterial there. And then instead of transferring money from the general fund to CIP or to that additional asset replacement, we're proposing to take that out of interest, which I will say has been very healthy for us. We don't want to count on that. It's not something that we look at as long-term sustainability. But we feel like we made some good decisions when we had bond funds and those things that have kind of given us a little bit of boost on the sustainability side. So we want to set some of that aside for future needs for replacement and repair of our facilities. Okay, so where does our money come from? Everybody wants to know that. So again, $39 million in revenue. Of 13.5 million comes from property tax, and that does include our current budget plus prior year. So we always estimate what prior year collections are. And we're pretty close on that. It's pretty conservative, actually. But that includes all of those things. Sales tax, 2.3 million, that's about half a percent higher than this year's budget. We originally had it in flat. But we've been trending 2% to 3% better, and we're estimating that we will have some additional sales tax revenue just from damages from people trying to do some rebuilding and repairs and things like that. So we're comfortable with that. I still think it's pretty conservative, given where we are and the nature of what we're fixing to experience. Transfers in, of course, some of that is from water admin fee that the water fund pays to the general fund for services like legal and finance and HR and those components. And those are built out on a percentage of departmental budget. Trina has a huge spreadsheet that we do that calculation every year. Street use fee, and then also a little bit coming in from occupancy tax for some administrative things that we do within the finance department for collections, audits, and those kind of things. Franchise fees, that's going to include K-Pub, Charter Communications, some other telephone companies, Atmos, those things. And then intergovernmental is simply the agreement that we have with Kerr County for EMS and then also with KISD for resource officers.
What is the number for services? You've got 17%. What is that number?
Oh, I left that out. That's going to be EMS primarily and solid waste. So that's going to be the landfill surcharges, not your solid waste curb collection. We don't, that's a pass-through. But that's, that's what that's going to be, so EMS. Sorry, I left that bullet off.
Okay, I'm just curious as to the, the amount of revenue generated by that.
It's, I can tell you.
If you add all this up, it only comes up to about 31 million instead of 39.
So you're about 8 million. So your services are 6.7 million.
Okay.
And so then there's some grant interest miscellaneous. Yeah, some other little stuff.
Okay.
That's the slide here. So this is the detail on what you were just asking me.
Okay.
So you can see the service revenue here. The big thing here, and the reason it's in a red box, is remember, we moved golf and KSP out. And so you have a big reduction in recreation revenue, which is now in their own funds. So that's what that is. So, and again, that negative change is because of that. So if we were to add them back in, we'd be about 2% different. Does that help you, Brenda? Sorry about that.
Yeah.
I left that bullet out.
Thanks.
So I won't go through all of this. I present this every year as far as definitions for property tax. And it, it's a complicated thing. And so I think definitions are important if people want to know what we're referring to. We try not to use acronyms all the time, but we naturally do. The, the new thing added to the slide is the disaster voter approval rate, and that's related to the resolution that you guys approved, directing Bob to calculate the 8%. And so I just wanted to include that in there. As you look at your budget book, you will see two tax rate calculation sheets, and one is for non-disaster and one is for disaster. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about how we kind of used a different methodology when we're calculating property tax this year. I'm sorry, that should not say revenue, property value loss. In the general fund, we're thinking that's, equates to about $275,000 at the rate that we are proposing. So if the 65 million in loss value is correct from Kirkad. So on an ordinary year, we'll budget between 98.5% to 99% collection rate, depending on what history is showing trends. We have a strong property tax collection rate, really. I would say that overall, we have no issues with property tax collections when really less than $200,000 a year is from prior years. So, so we're usually very confident in that, and we've been right on target. But with the unknowns, we went ahead and reduced that collection rate to 97.5. There's some provisions this year that are going to allow people who have exemptions to pay quarterly if they need to or half pays as they usually do. But the quarterlies will also be no penalty. So there's going to be some other provisions. Point that lets people know that they have some other options. So we did that, and then we took out the estimated lost revenue from the estimated loss value that provided by Kirkad. So again, though, they have until October. I don't know the exact deadline. They have 105 days from the declaration of disaster to apply for those exemptions. And so once they do that and those get certified, then we'll be able to update the roll and bring you back really something a lot more solid. Rate that we're proposing is 5579. That's down from 5595 of last year. This is not using any of the disaster rate. Interest and sinking, our debt fund is 1406. That is not a proposed, that is our debt rate. So that's, that one is not negotiable. And we have to pay debt first, as we talk about regularly. Everything else is left over for MNO. And so I did point out that the voter approval disaster rate at the 8%, of which not all of that would have to be utilized if that was the direction that we went. It would be 5711. So not a, not a big difference there. I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. So this, again, this is a tool. This is not setting concrete. I can't create a chart that's going to be able to capture every nuance of every property. But I wanted to just provide some information about the difference between the 5579 and the 8%, just so that you could see what the impact would be to the property tax owners. So the 2025 taxable value there, you can see that, that's last year's rate. I applied a 5% value increase because you can't, I can't use $100,000 this year and $100,000 last year. That, that's not reasonable because there are value increases. So we applied a 5%, which is about average for our residential properties based on our certified roll to just kind of tell you what your change would be based on what you paid last year to what you would pay this year at those values. And then the one on the right is the same exact thing, but calculated at the disaster rate. So right now, our average residential value is $376,000 and some change. So if you kind of look at that 350 range there, you can see about $92 increase on the rate that we're proposing and at the 8%, if it were to go all to the way to that rate, would be 140. So this is just a tool, again, estimated tool, but a very good tool for taxpayers to use. You can use this link, which is on our website. You can go in and put in your taxable value of your home, and it will generate a tax receipt for you that is unofficial, of course, because, you know, we don't know, there's a lot of nuances. But it'll basically tell you what your taxes are paying for. So we like this because it'll tell you how much you're paying for public safety, how much you're paying for fire prevention. And by department, it breaks it out, and it will tell you what your, what that spread is based on your tax rate. This is just rates and revenue historical. We always like to show this because people want to know what increases have been over time and what revenue looks like. Naturally, as values go up, rates are going to go down. That's the way it works naturally because there's more spread. So it's like anything else, when more people are paying in, you don't have to collect as much from each household or business owner. You can see the yellow line is our rate. So even though revenues go up, the rate is still, can go down. And the big shift there, of course, was the voter-approved public safety bonds there on, in FY 2023. So new taxable value does have a big impact. So again, as growth comes, the taxable value, of course, on this is the impact is year one because it's not calculated as part of the no new revenue rate. So your check, your no new revenue rate is calculated, your levy is calculated, and then the new value is calculated on the rate. So it doesn't, it's not part of that. Now, year two, then it becomes part of the no new revenue rate calculation. So it's interesting when you're tracking new value because you can see we've about averaged. This past year, we had a really high new value. And so I went ahead and gave you some of the high contributors there so that you would kind of know, like, what areas are we really growing? And is it commercial, is it residential? And it's, it's heavily residential. And so, you know, that's, that's not, I'm not going to say the best, but it's, it's a little, it's going to be less impact than it would be if it were commercial just because of the values over time. So anyway, I wanted to show you that so you could see where the new value was coming from and who the top contributors are. So revenue generated from the proposed rate. So I did this by fund so that you can see the money that's going to be going into each fund at the rate of 5579 and compared that to last year. So you can see an increase in the general fund of $683,000. And that's, 297,000 of that is from new value. So when you look at it like that, that's when you can really see the impact of new value. So the other, the difference there is going to be from current ratepayers. So overall, 401,000 of the 604, because there was, there were some decreases there just based on how we calculated some things. So 66% of that increases from new value. So had we requested the disaster rate of 8% all the way to the 5711, that would generate $431,000. So sales tax, and these are the, only the two that I'll talk about in detail. And that's because they are the largest contributors to the general fund. And sales tax, obviously, more volatile than property tax because there's a lot of unknowns. So very critical for us to forecast this accurately. Sometimes it can be difficult. But the main thing is that we identify outliers and remove those when we're doing estimations and projections and then also budget for future years. So we really watch those every month, all the way down to about the $3,000 taxpayer to see the changes that we're having month over month, year over year, and identify new taxpayers, those who have dropped off and those kind of things to make some decisions on that. This is a different look of historical sales tax. So this is total revenue for the year instead of your month-over-month trend lines. We are budgeting half percent over fiscal year 2025, which I still feel is pretty conservative. So I'm hopeful that we will meet budget this year, which we weren't sure in the beginning of the year. But it's really started trending a little more consistently. So that's been nice. We did reduce last year's, for FY 25's budget by 3% compared to '24 just because we were seeing some leveling and things were trending down. Coming out of COVID and inflation, where we had double-digit increases all the time, that's not something we can expect to sustain. So still very healthy. And you can see even with the change, our revenue is still higher than it was, you know, back in even 2019 before COVID. So unknowns, which taxpayers might have been impacted by the flood. We don't completely know that answer yet. Maybe people are going to change their habits, one way or the other, you know, spending habits, just based on the flood. Impact of donated goods on sales tax. And while we've loved and really enjoyed, you know, all of the donated goods, you know, I think about things like all of Curval ISD's school supplies were donated, but not from our local vendors. And so what was the impact that they had on our local folks that were planning on, on those sales? So we just don't know that yet, and we won't know until September what that looks like. And then impact of sales tax on rebuilding. So potentially increase in building materials and things like that. This is the, really the tool that we use the most. And this is a 12-month rolling average because we've talked about, as we do financial reports each month, that month-over-month is really not the best indicator because we could have some outliers, someone pays late or someone pays early. So it's really not good practice to just use month-over-month comparisons or even year-over-year. But this kind of tells you what's happening over a 12-month period. And so we identified February here for dollars because purchases for December, sales taxes received in February. So that's why we use this month. And so you can, you know, kind of track what's happening in February that even when we have a downward trend, revenues are still up. And so we kind of take several factors here to decide what do we think's going to happen? And you can see the red line on the right over the past six months, basically that it, things are trending back up to somewhat of what we're going to call normal. So prior to COVID, but also after inflation, So prior to COVID, but also after inflation where we saw a big heavy movement. So other major revenues in the general fund, and we talked about this a little bit when we looked at the detail earlier. We took out property tax and sales tax just so you could have a better look at all of the other pieces of the pie. So we have EMS services and so we did break out services here between EMS and solid waste. So when we say services and we present those to you monthly, it's those two things added together. So we broke them out here just so you could really see the difference and what kind of drives our other major revenues. Intergovernmental, you can see that there in the light blue and then franchise fees in the orange. So you can see where increases are and where the, the kind of consistency is year over year. So with all of that, anybody have any questions on revenues before I hop into expenses? So where does our money go? So same kind of look here at expenditures by category. And I wanted to show this again because if you look at just the budget book, you're going to see that reduction. And again, we bring KSP and golf back into it, we're about a 2% increase overall. So we'll talk more about KSP and golf in future slides, but wanted to show you that look. This is proposed expenditures by department and, you know, we, we focus a lot on giving it to you by category, but what, what are departments costing the city? And so I think this is important as you look at the split. Obviously, big tickets there are police and fire, which are not a surprise. That's one of our high priorities. When you look at the parks and recreation triangle there, it's important to remember that that also includes building and facility maintenance, janitorial and all those kind of things. So because they report to that department, it falls into that, that category, but just wanted to point that out. And then you can see the other departments as they keep their each, their percentage of the budget.
What do you have encapsulated in other?
So other is going to be contingency, it's going to be dues and subscriptions, some employee things when we have events and those kind of things, but, but primarily contingency. And so what, what you'll see with contingency, and you'll notice this when we do financial reporting, is contingency will start the year at $250,000. But we don't, as a rule, charge things to contingency because we don't want to put it where it belongs. So if we need to move money for a big maintenance or a big repair, something like that, we will actually reduce by line item transfer that budget and move it to the other budget. So you'll see that happen between the current budget, you know, the adopted budget and the current budget. So we'll move that between line items so that we're, we're accurately charging. So that's the only way to build history. Because if we put everything to contingency that we used contingency for, then we would never really know what we used it for. So that's the big one there and the other things are really small. So just a different look at general fund expenses. So again, $39 million here. What you're seeing is public safety in the dark blue and general government in the light blue. And this is departmental budgets. So 54% of the general fund dedicated to public safety. Consistent percentage-wise compared to prior years and it just shows you the growth over years is what, where our expenditures are. Most increases are related to personnel, which we'll talk about a little bit, and inflationary factors. So beginning in 2022, inflation really started to impact us. Gas went through the roof, cost of materials and supplies and services went through the roof because other vendors were paying their personnel more. And so costs just naturally grew. And that's, that's the biggest reason why you can see those increases starting in fiscal year '22, which I think speaks to what Dalton was talking about, about long-term sustainability and compounding costs. So this is just looking at the personnel in the general fund. So $39 million, 28 million of that is personnel. And that does include not just salaries and wages, but that's going to be group insurance, training, retirement. All of those things are wrapped up into a personnel category. Of that 28 million, 18.9 is public safety. And you can see that same look here where the dark blue is public safety and the light blue is general government. This does not include things that are support departments. We charge those in ice cream, right?
You do want to say that again?
We get paid in ice cream for our services. Chief McCall, super nice about that. But we're proposing a 3% average merit increase and a 3% step increase for public safety. And this is in line with the step plans that you have seen before. So just wanted to show you what our largest expenditure was there. This, again, is just expenditure by category and this is giving you basically a five-year look. So you can see where our heaviest expenditures are and where our increases are and where our consistency is. And so again, a little bit of decline in supplies and maintenance, but that's heavily related to KSP and golf. But again, in 2022, you'll see the little uptick pretty much in every department or every category there and then leveling off after that. And we haven't seen prices reduce, but we have seen leveling of price increases, if that makes sense. So we're not seeing 30% increases on supplies and maintenance like we were. They've leveled out a little bit. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Trina, talk about water fund. But do you have any questions on general fund expenditures before I do that?
You want? You?
All right, water fund. So water fund is balanced also at $17.6 million for fiscal year '26 that we are proposing. It is a $763,000 increase, which is 4.5% over fiscal year '25. And 456 of that, 763, is attributed to the increase in the reused water cells that we had proposed. And then the remaining is also small increases to water and sewer rates. Key, key factors here in the water fund, besides those two, the average user should see approximately about $5 per month increase on their water bill due to those small increases in the water sewer rates. The irrigation and reuse rates, we looked at those and we did do a haircut to the irrigation consumption. We take that into consideration when we set the rates as well as the reuse system also. We definitely, everything has been super conservative on the operational, as Julie said. Everything is super tight and some of the sustainability pieces actually were reserved here in the water fund. We, we didn't get hit as hard on what we had to cut out here on the water side. But we'll talk about those here in a little bit. Asset replacement is receiving a transfer of $650,000, CIP $500,000. And then we were able to add in some to our facility replacement plan for $125,000. Debt services, 4.7 million for the year. And then the transfer this year to, from the water